Okay, well, it is 6:32, so why don't we call the meeting to order? Could I have a motion to adopt remote participation?
So moved.
Second.
Um, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Dave O'Connor-Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux-Cochard, yes?
Ford Spaulding-Dober, yes?
Jennifer Leonie-Lancaster, yes?
Judy Cochran-Laxington, yes?
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes?
Alice Chalukas-Joe, yes?
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, moving on to for the good of the organization. I mean, we'll be hearing a lot from George and Bob and Ed about how things are going. Um, in advance, I want to thank everyone on the administration and faculty on everything you're doing to, in this remote environment, to make sure the, you know, kids are getting everything that they need and, uh, you know, that the quality of education remains to the Minuteman standards. Anything that anyone else has for the good of the organization? Alice?
Really just a technical question. Is Arlington present or not present?
Oh.
No, not present.
Okay, thank you.
Um, moving on to school committees' goals for the year, and I think we're going to want to take, um, a vote to approve the school committee goals. I want to thank all the committees for getting all of your information to Julia in a timely way for us to be able to take a look at for this meeting. Um, in addition to the goals that you received in the packet, um, I'd like to add too that the officers had discussed, and I just need to ask, Julia, did this go out to the full school committee? The two additional goals? Or can someone say, did you receive, um, school committee goals? No, I'm seeing, so, um...
No, no, Pam, would you like me to send it now? It went to you. Would you like me to send it?
Uh, yes, please. I will, you know what, I will share my screen while I am talking about these. If you just bear with me for a second.
Michael is here, Alice, now.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael.
Hi, Michael, welcome.
Evening.
Um, um, so I'm, I hope that you all can, maybe, take a little bigger. Um, we had talked about at our last officers' meeting adding two goals. One, just an overall goal, basically talking about our role in supporting the administration, you know, particularly during this pandemic time when we are, um, you know, in a period that none of us have gone through before. We thought we should have an overall goal expressing, um, you know, our, our role in supporting the administration through this period. The other piece that really did not fall under a committee is working on the completion of the athletic field project. So we have a general goal, the school, the school committee will work with the administration to oversee completion of the athletic field. Was the school committee will support the administration in providing high-quality education to students in the current environment. I'm going to start sharing a few of those that were received from committees.
Michael, Michael, can you mute yourself? I'm getting feedback from your...
Thank you. I want to see if, um, so that we can move on to discussion of goals. Could I have a motion to approve the school committee goals for 2020, 2021?
So moved.
Second. Okay, uh, let's move to the question of the goal. Any, um, any thoughts, questions, comments? Okay. If not, let's move to roll call. Uh, Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Dave O'Connor-Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux-Cochard, yes?
Ford Spaulding-Dober, yes?
Jennifer Leonie-Lancaster, yes?
Judy Cochran-Laxington, yes?
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes?
Alice Chalukas-Joe, yes?
And, Michael, I did hear you say your name, town, and yes, but I just want to let you know that it was very difficult to hear, so it was very, very light.
Yeah, I think the, I think the audio source, Michael, that you have selected is not the headset that you're using.
And thank you for your technical support, Dave. Okay, let's move on to principal's report. George?
Okay, couple, three things we'll talk about tonight. I just wanted to let the committee know that we've, um, we've updated our field trip procedures for this year, and a lot of what we wrote will stay in place for next year. It should be in the packet, and I'm pretty sure it is, and I got it from Julia. It was actually on our docket to do anyway for this year to introduce a travel tracker program, which would streamline the whole approval process. And also on our minds, and this is going back to December, long before we even heard of COVID, we wanted to increase, um, make sure that we got at least two weeks' notice because we want to make sure that the kids are leaving with all the proper medication and lunches and everything else that they needed. You know, we've, people have, just so that we, just so that we know that the kids are safe, and of course with this, this, we just added in some extra COVID procedures, so, you'll see that we're requiring to make sure that students have filled out their COVID acknowledgement form. We're completely prohibiting trips to red zone areas. We provided these teachers with the ability to check where they're going. If they are going to try to go to a yellow zone area, it may be permissible. We just have to understand what they're doing. So I'll give you an example. If, um, I think at one point Salem, Mass., was, you know, had some issues, but it was yellow. So if they were, if you're environmental and you're going to Salem Willows and you're going to be outside entitled pools all day, that might be okay. But if you're going to Salem because you're going to go into a museum, um, and, you know, that's maybe visiting a restaurant or something like that, nope, that's not, you know. So, um, we're going to use our discretion as far as that goes. But we've really tried to get the message out, let's play it as safe as possible as we, as we possibly can. Those are really the big ones. I mean, it's, you know, there'll be no out-of-state travel this year, so I won't be pestering you with any permissions for that, um, just to keep things easy. And the last thing we really stressed with teachers in this plan for this year is that they really need to be ready with an alternate plan because if it's, if an area turns to red and we, you know, because we get updates every Wednesday and the trip is Thursday morning, they may not be going on Thursday morning, and they just need to know that upfront. You know, it's almost like saying to them, you really want to plan a trip Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, but, um, try to make that explicit as we possibly can. And we do have a couple of field trips, um, ready to go. You know, one of them is for early education, and they just go into Lexington. That's just a weekly trip that they make all the time, so that's pretty easy. Um, and so far, we, you know, we haven't had to worry about, everyone's picking areas that are, uh, you know, that, that, in the lighter colors, lighter shades, so we're in good shape. And it's not like we have a lot. It's an early end environmental, I think, the only two right now. But I just wanted to give you that update that we, you know, it's one of those things that we were thinking about, and then, you know, we had a tackle once we got in. We had too many other things to deal with upfront, but now we finally buttoned this down. I want to thank everybody who, who worked on filling out these procedures, like Amy and, and Katie and Sarah from the, from the nurse's office, and Cheryl Mixon, they've been fantastic, so thank them, thank you to them. The second item is we're preparing this week, we're going to be doing our first virtual parent-teacher conferences, so just want to let you know, you know, we, we really batted around a lot of different ways to orchestrate this. We think we've hit upon an efficient and good way to do it, which is essentially, we're just making a Teams phone call, so it's, you can do a video conference as long as the, um, parent on the other end is using the student's device. They just turn it on, essentially, the kid logs in, and then we can call them. So we're, we're going to see how that goes. You know, we talked about different ways we could do it. We kind of, we settled on this, and we'll evaluate. We have another one, not until the spring, and who knows what the situation may be then, but we're hoping to learn from, from this as we're trying to, it's another brand-new thing we're just trying to figure out. Hopefully, it's going to go well. And then finally, freshmen finished their, as Katie likes to call it, the speed dating week of exploratory, or the lightning round, where the, the kids visited all of our shops for an hour and 10 minutes during their first week in the building. And then at the conclusion of that, they pick, uh, the shops that they want to visit. And so, just to give you some of that data, the number-one choice overall, a little over 10% of the kids wanted to visit is multimedia, so that shop is, um, is really cranking them. Programming and web development, huge, is number two. That's been great because they've had some, some lower numbers over the years, but they're really robust this year. And tie for third are electrical and design and visual communications, so, which are perennials, they're usually right up in the top three anyway, but it was nice to see programming and web get up there. Also want to update people, some, some other numbers are horticulture and plant science. You know, they had 21 kids pick them as either their first or second shop, which is a massive increase over last year, and I think it, it's a reflection of two things. It's, you know, they're really committed to the process and trying to put on a good show, but this year they really could because the greenhouse was done. And if you haven't been in there to really get a little, go in there anytime, just see how they, how that thing looks, because it is amazing when you hear them talk about how it operates, and you can just see kids, I, I was watching it, and I just thought, I'm fascinated. I knew all this stuff that was going on, whereas last year they didn't even, it wasn't ready, lots of their shop wasn't ready, so it was really hard for them to sell, but this year they really rebounded, so, um, glad to see that. We still, just by looking through the numbers a bit, um, you know, the, our girls and where they kind of ended up, or have the most interest, is still pretty traditional, you know, what you might expect, health assistance, cosmetology. And then it's multimedia, environmental, early education, and design and visual communications also actually tie. The one trades area that is the most interesting to girls that they'll be visiting is advanced manufacturing, so that one's number one by a long shot. And then we have, you know, then you see the sprinkles throughout, a couple here, a couple there, and all the other trades, but the one trade that did kind of jump out was advanced manufacturing. And, um, you know, we're just combing through that data, just trying to understand, you know, what went well, and what, you know, where are areas that we need to have emphasis on, and what do kids like, you know, and even from what towns, like, um, the kids we have from Concord, they all want to go to advanced manufacturing. That's interesting, and, you know, we'd have to figure out why, but, but that's Bolton, all, top choice for the kids was programming, all right? And, uh, you know, Acton, number-one choice was electrical from, among all of them. So it's just interesting to kind of see that, you know, it's good information I can pass off to, to Tony, so when he's talking to these different communities, he can, you know, go right into their warehouse, but also introduce something that maybe they hadn't thought about as another way to make sure that we're getting a nice broad message out there to everybody. So, um, that process is underway. Next week is their last week of exploratory, they'll be spending two and a half days and two more shops. All the kids got to visit their top three choices, even though we let them pick five, they all got their top three, and their fourth was either their fourth choice or their fifth choice, depending upon really the logistics of how things flowed, but, so we're really happy because generally kids tend to fall within their top three anyway, you know, so I think we're on course for, for a successful exploratory, and that's generally it for me.
Okay, um, I see, um, Jeff's hand, and, but before I call on you, Jeff, could I ask George to, can you just give us sort of an overall picture of how things are going? Have all the classes now been in for in-person instruction?
No, uh, the only, the juniors were in one day, um, in the very, very beginning. Their first full week of, uh, classes won't happen till the first week of November, the last days of October, and that was really, we, um, kind of tilted the scale so that we could get the freshmen in more, because at the time, you know, we weren't really sure what the COVID picture was going to look like, so we thought we'd rather err on getting them, um, comfortable and engaged with a, with a CTE shop, because what if we had to shut down and they really didn't have a place to go, and they didn't, they weren't done exploring, what would that, it would have been a mess? So, uh, the juniors will be in person then. We have seniors in this week, we have sophomores in two weeks ago, freshmen, this is, you know, we've seen them the most, um, but it's been, all the kids that have been in, I know, I, I get asked it all the time, and it's, you know, mask, mask-wearing is not a problem. It's amazing, the kids just have, we haven't had one incident, um, regarding wearing a mask. I think the kids understand it, you know, they get it. I think, um, I described it to Dr. B. a little while, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I said, I almost think the kids feel a sense of relief when they're in here. They're just, you know, they're, yes, they're happy, but they're also relieved, they just want to be there, you know, they just want to be around people, so I just, I don't get the sense that they want to screw around with that really, you know, like doing, just ripping your mask off, like they understand it's just part of the deal of being there, so, um, so what we've had so far has been good.
Okay. Um, Jeff, you had a question?
My question was very related to Pam's, and I assume in the category of no news is good news, that the reason you haven't had to say anything about overall how things are going is that it's now old hat, you've been there for a month, and everything's been going fine, and the, the people are working together fine, and, and your overall feeling of how things are going is positive.
I, I have a positive feeling. I think, you know, it's, it's work, though, and, you know, if you're teaching, you know, I know that, particularly those who are doing a bulk of the remote teaching, which are, you know, all of our academics, and once in a while the, um, CTE, that's a, it's a chore, and it's hard, and, you know, I've spent a fair amount of time talking to people, trying to keep their energy up, keep a positive outlook. Teachers are harder than themselves here because we expect a lot, uh, which is a good thing, but sometimes I'll give you an example, you know, well, I get really frustrated because I, I have to wait for this to load, and I have to wait for that to load, and it, you know, it just drives people crazy. It's just one of those, you just, these are things we need to just kind of let go a little bit. The computer can only download as fast as it goes, and, you know, it's cumbersome and bulky, and, uh, you're doing fine, you know, you're doing what you can do based on, you know, the constraints that we have, they're not your fault, it's just, you know, um, it's still frustrating for teachers, though, that way. But I think, um, you know, the kids are showing up, they're doing, the attendance is good, you know, we, we're, but it's sort of like normals. Do we have some kids that we're concerned about attendance with? Yes. You know, we're having conversations with them? Yes, that's really no different than any other situation, and that's how, that's how we're treating it. So, I think, um, you know, we'll take a good look at the end of the term, how we're really doing, take another chance to assess, well, what, what is, what has been now that all the kids have been through here a couple of weeks? What's the attendance like virtually? What's it like in person? What are grades like? Because, you know, sometimes there's calls for, we should change this, and we should change that, and there's a little bit of, on my part of listening and saying, I understand, but why don't we just keep going? You know, it's a little early to be pulling the plug just yet when some indicators look pretty good, and structure and routine and consistency sometimes has a way of working itself out. And I really trust it to teachers as we go, because I hear it, you know, oh, I, you know, all these little tricks about how they manage a class during the day, well, that's, you know, that's all coming, relearning all that, and as that gets better and more proficient, I think, you know, we'll be, we're going to be even better. It's just, it's a grind right now, and, you know, we're all learning together.
Because I'd be very happy with your attitude right now, that's all I'm saying, is that. And by the way, you will, you will have more faculty burnout this year than typical, and it's going to come earlier. Now, we have the burst of energy at the beginning of the year, the students, the teachers, but I can tell you that the grind is very tough this year, and I'm glad that you're aware of it.
Okay, thanks, George. I have Jennifer, and then Dave.
Okay, so just a quick question. I have a college student doing remote learning at home, and electricity went out during his class today. What is the, I mean, how are you adjusting? Is there, are these classes available for people to review afterwards if that happens? I mean, he had no mechanism for, if, by, through no fault of his own, you know, if technical difficulties happen, what are you doing to address kind of how kids make that kind, kind of timeout?
Well, one of the things for sure is that, as in working with all the teachers, or, you know, even before we technically had last year end, uh, we talked about making sure that we had resources available for all kids up there in Aspen. That's the number-one place where they can, you know, they should be able to get all their assignments from there. It's also a great warehouse for resources, like there's a whole section of just as group resources, so things they may need, whether it's, you know, videos or PowerPoints or whatever teachers prepare, you know, those things can be readily available there. Teams also has some ability to store, uh, some resources as well, and the kids should know, or are learning certainly, um, you know, how to get into there, so that's really the best way. And when these things happen, those are the, you know, it's, we handle them case by case, you know, we, we certainly, um, you know, are getting calls from parents with different little issues that they may have, and we, you know, we just try to be reasonable and help walk them through. Another thing that we've recently done, uh, did, is, um, we paid for Aspen to create a tutorial for all parents so that they can understand how to go through the student portal, so they can see what the kids are looking at, they can understand where they can, where they can find grades and resources and all the things I just mentioned. We just got it up on the website, I think, today, I, you know, Dan was working on it today, so, um, so it's just another resource that, that people have, so if they're stuck, wondering, like, what do I do? How do I get it? We can show them how to get it.
Oh, that's fantastic. Uh, Dave?
Yeah, so, um, Jeff kind of spoke to it a little bit with, uh, burnout, but, um, I got to imagine that, that with all the challenges and, and, um, new issues that are cropping up, that, uh, that our, our staff is a little, uh, on edge, or, or, or even, um, feeling, you know, the, the, the taxation of, of doing this. What types of resources above and beyond the normal, um, you know, social stuff that, that's in place when there's a crisis, but knowing that this is going to be predictive, is the administration looking at? And I don't know if this is something, you know, Ed is working on as well, but, um, proactive things like headspace and some of these things, are there, are there things that, that, that are being used to try and help keep people, you know, balanced and, and taking care of themselves? Because we really need these resources to be healthy in order to perform. And, and I'm not just talking physical health, I'm talking mental health here.
Yeah, this is a real challenge, I think. We, we did do some work, and I know some of the focus, well, the focus was really on kids, but it applies to faculty as well, when you talk about being trauma-informed and the social-emotional well-being. Some of the training we did in the first 10 days, you know, are, there's certainly lessons there for all of us to, to remember, you know, that we're all, no matter who you are, and it's, it's really stuck with me with one of the workshops where, no matter who you are, your level of anxiety is higher than it normally is. Even if you don't think it is, it is, because you're, we're all dealing with these irregularities in our lives that are uncomfortable, and we don't, we don't want, you know, so just kind of remembering that, you know?
We're definitely seeing that in the, in the, you know, first responders' communities and that type of stuff, and, and, and quite frankly, I, I view the, the, you know, education faculty and, and staff as being part of that first responding community. And quite frankly, you know, the medical staffs kind of know how to help each other in that realm because of trauma and stuff like that, but this is a new space for a lot of, a lot of people, and, and I just want to make sure that we keep that on our radar, um, and, and again, start looking at, you know, companies or, or benefits within our own medical plans or whatever that provide that mental health guidance and, and, and providing them the support. The fact of even bringing it up and, and addressing it and trying to help make sure that they know that the resources are there, um, takes a burden off as well, right? So that they don't feel so alone and, and feel like that they're doing it on their own. I, I have the utmost respect for you teachers, and, 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 you know, we wouldn't be on this committee if we didn't, and, uh, I, I just want to make sure we're taking care of our people, that's all.
Yep, I appreciate it, certainly, certainly.
The other thing we've done is we've got a new vendor for our employee assistance program, was, seems to be a little bit more in tune with the times, and is offering more programming in the same vein that you're talking about. I think it was last week, HR sent out a, a link to the new employee assistance program vendor, and I went on it, and there was a lot more interesting stuff than our previous, uh, vendor, so...
Yeah, I'm, that, that's all I was asking, Ed, is I just want to make sure that we keep that as, not, not that you guys don't have enough on your plates, but I just want to make sure that, that, that's thought of earlier rather than when a person's in crisis, that's all.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Dave. Any other questions? Okay, oh, Judy?
Thank you. Um, to follow up on what you were saying, Dave, and for Dr. P., so the employee assistance program, is that like a wellness program through HR for the employees?
It's a, it's a number of things that help are available to employ, for employees to access without charge, including things in terms of counseling or workshops, seminars, coordinating services for an employee that may need additional services, and it's all done confidentially. And it's, we've had it for a long, long time, but I, frankly, it was kind of stale, and I think this environment, as we're all aware of, as we all are somewhat painfully aware of, uh, it's providing more.
Thank you for giving it a refresh. And I just, I'm familiar with a, a few of the wellness programs and some other communities, and, I mean, it could be anything from a walking club to, it, you know, it doesn't have to be, it could be low-cost, no-cost type things, too, so, just a thought, and they usually operate through HR.
Right.
Hey, Alice, then Jeff? Are you receiving any feedback from staff on whether they find it helpful?
It, it's just started, so I hadn't heard anything from them. The new vendor just started a week or two ago.
Okay, Jeff?
Send everybody high-quality dark chocolate bars. I find myself going through extra ones, and that really, little bits of that throughout the day help me get through it. Better than a lot of psychological services, dark chocolate bars, good quality.
Keep the dementors away as well. Any other questions for George? Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you, George. Let's move on to finance report. Bob? Uh, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry about that. Agenda A, Doc., is the reappointment on the retirement board. Dr. McQuillan is recommending to the school committee the reappointment of Kevin Mahoney to the Minuteman Retirement Board. The upcoming term is for an appointment that will be for three years, from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Kevin has previously served the retirement board for 10 years. I'm recommending that the school committee vote to reappoint Kevin Mahoney to the Minuteman Retirement Board.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Oh?
Any questions? Comments? Okay, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leonie Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay. Agenda item B is fiscal year 21 budget reallocation request. I'm recommending that the school committee vote to authorize the line item budget reallocations from the revolving funds to the general funds in the fiscal year 21 budget. Under school committee policy, these transfer, transfers would require school committee approval. I'm recommending a vote to authorize fiscal year 21 line item reallocations as presented in the document I shared tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, any, any discussion?
Just wanted to point out the finance committee reviewed this last week and unanimously recommended.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leonie Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Agenda item C, vote on paying prior year bills. I've attached invoices for the school committee to see for Hanscom Air Force Base for the pool rental of $618.75 and athletic, athletic training services for $2,738. These were not submitted in a timely manner in fiscal year 20, and they are now outstanding in fiscal year 21. The challenge for our athletic department to secure alternative playing locations and the needs for athletic trainers at those events have contributed to their oversight and these bills and the prior bill that I had brought up a few months ago. So, you know, it's an unfortunate circumstance, but it's something that we do owe and we should pay. Mass General Law, Chapter 44 requires seven eighths vote of approval to authorize a regional school district to pay prior year billing in the current fiscal year. I'm recommending a vote for authorization to use fiscal year 21 funds to pay the attached invoices from Hanscom Air Force Base for pool rental of $618.75 and athletic training services for $2,738 as identified in the memo.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Once again, finance committee reviewed this last week and unanimously recommended.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Bob, did I hear you say requires seven eighths?
Yes.
Why not me?
Anything else? Let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leonie Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Well, that's unanimous.
Okay, agenda item D, coronavirus release fund municipal grant requests update. And I provided a memo with more bulleted details that I'm sure you probably already read. To summarize it, Dr. McQuillan and I had attended several meetings from our associations like the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools and the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. And we were encouraged, there was actually guest speakers from the Department of Ed and the Department of Revenue who encouraged regional school districts to request funding from their municipals. There was a whole host of bullets, bulleted items that I explained, but it just made sense that the funding was there, there was funding within the municipalities, and a few regional schools had already done it before we had done it. And they were encouraging all school, regional schools, because originally the regional schools were forgotten in some of these coronavirus relief fund grants. And so this was kind of a way of allowing us accessing fund through our, our, our member districts. I provide you the details with which funds were asked for from each community. The general schoolwide expenses for COVID, like additional technology to teach online learning, 25% of the PPEs because 75% you have to apply through FEMA. You can't go through other sources until you apply for them. Those sort of school-wide things were, were decided based on the four-year rolling average to try and make it as fair as possible for all the communities to chip in towards our coronavirus expenses, school-wide expenses. We did also request some town-specific expenses for the juniors and seniors who could use technology upgrades. So, so far at this point, we actually already received an MOU from one of the communities. And yep. And several other communities, I was at a FinCom meeting, Pam, where they were very supportive and they understood the rationale for the requests. Because you had asked me to go to a FinCom meeting and act in, there was another community that was also very supportive. So so far, it's looking pretty good. Everybody agrees that if this money is out there to spend on these sort of needs, that that's what they should be spent on. And that's the update.
I just want to let the committee know that next Wednesday, we're meeting with all the town managers, and this is one of the items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a quick question about that? So I know Lancaster is the one who has the MOU that is in play. If some school holds out, how does that affect the budget process? I mean, are we just, I mean, we've got the, the budget set. But is that, do the other member communities cover for that community if they don't want to contribute?
Well, I think so. There's no real compelling readjustment. You know, we've made our request known. It's up to the, really the goodwill of the town to honor that request or not. If we ever get a fourth or fifth, whatever number we're up to of governmental reallocation, we're hoping that the regionals will not be forgotten in this allocation, the next allocation that comes out. So, no, if someone says they don't want to do it, they don't, there's no recourse for us.
What's, what's the process for getting the funds? Does it require a town meeting appropriation, or how does that part work?
There was an MOU. In fact, Lancaster was way ahead of us. It was an MOU that has the mechanism for which the town can then forward funds to us. As long as that MOU exists and it's legitimate funds for this federal grant, it's okay for the town to get the funds to us.
Authorized by the Board of Selectmen. Is that the mechanism? Okay.
Any other questions on this for Bob Ford?
First of all, do you have a draft of that MOU?
I believe Julia emailed a draft. Oh, the MOU, no. Well, we do have a draft of it. We haven't sent it out.
It might be helpful, and I assume that our action should be, I don't know if my town knows about it, if they've paid attention to it. So I could bring it to their attention, so I'll do that. And it'd be nice if I had the MOU and I could ask them to, to deal with it, so.
Well, as Dr. B said, we were going to meet with the town administrators so that we can have that conversation with them anyway.
I'm not sure my administrator is going to be there according to what Dr. B told me.
Then I'll make sure you get that, Ford.
Yeah.
And I will say that the MOU that we, I got, the, it was, it was very comprehensive in that if the town did not approve of the way that the district spent the money, then there would be a recourse. So there's a lot of, you know, stop gaps. There's a lot of accountability. I, I thought that was very well written, and I thank you for it.
I'll take care of it as soon as I get that.
Will do. It's on my list to do.
Okay, um, Alice?
Um, the new town manager, according to a selectman I talked to, the new town manager here is reviewing their budget needs and, you know, is going to consider the school requests afterwards. But I think somebody needs to reach out to her from the town and maybe not at the, this meeting. I don't know if she's going to that meeting. I think you should reach out to her independent of that.
Will do.
Anyone else on this topic? Okay, you want to move to the budget calendar?
Yes. Last agenda item is E. It's the budget process calendar for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 22. It's a calendar that you're familiar with. It's the process that we use, which is a very comprehensive process, better than many of the schools I've worked in in the past. So, you know, why reinvent the wheel? This is working great. It's a great process calendar. We've already begun the first steps of getting the, the budgeting module out to the district leaders and lead teachers so that they can have their input. And as it goes on, we will include people, as you can see, in the various, various committees will get their opportunities to, to see the budgeting process. Some of the dates may be changed because I realized that some of our Monday meetings for FinCom might end up being holidays, so we might have to change some of those, but we'll, we'll, this document always gets modified, whether it's snow days or whether it's holidays, we'll, we'll modify it. But this is the general idea for you to see how the budgeting process goes.
Okay, any questions on the calendar for Bob? Okay, thank you very much.
Alice, Alice?
Oh, Alice?
I just really like seeing the calendar.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for putting this together for us. Okay, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Well, all, the only thing under my item is the school building committee. There's really, you know, we're in the process of closing out the MSBA project, and at the same time, we're in the process of ramping up the athletic field project. I'll just say briefly, and Ford can fill in the gaps if I have any. With the athletic fields, we had a very, we had eight bids. We would have had nine had the one bidder couldn't figure out how to hit send or something, so they missed the bid. But we had eight bids. We started today by interviewing with the team on their KBA's direction along with Skanska. The lowest bidder. Tomorrow, we're interviewing the second lowest bidder. And we, we will have a recommendation to discuss with the school building committee on the 19th. And we're encouraged by what we've seen so far.
I really have nothing more to add. I think we are very encouraged. I think we're going to be looking at a base bid, perhaps some alternates in there, so. It's come out very well.
Yeah, apparently we're the largest project of this kind that's been put out to bid in the last few months and apparently we're the only project that's going to be bid over the next few. So there's a lot of folks looking to keep their machines running. And so we're going to benefit from it. And of course, we, I'll just remind you, we have that special meeting on the 27th of October where we're just going to be focused on the, the athletic field bids and the financing plan. FinCom, Minuteman FinCom will have met prior to that. The school building committee will have met prior to that. So we're, we'll have all the information we need to move forward.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to subcommittee reports. Finance Committee, Steve?
Basically, Bob already gave our report, but it was pretty much our last agenda was what we voted today.
Great, thank you. Enrollment, Jeff?
I have a sheet here somewhere. It's only one page long. Here it is. Uh, no, that's not the right page. So the enrollment task force finally did meet. And the news on enrollment at Minuteman remains good. There's now evidence that the increased enrollment is a trend and not just a short-term spike. What the future holds, we don't need, but everything so far is uncovering, is encouraging. There's a strong plan in place for communications recruitment for next year's class as well. Events, I could, I should say that when we first started this like a year and a half ago, we had, we're in a very different situation. And what we needed to do was very different. The enrollment picture at Minuteman has turned around 180 degrees. So the focus that the enrollment task force originally had is no longer fully relevant. So the main question that we discussed and asked during this particular meeting is, do we need an enrollment task force? And if so, what should its focus be? And after some discussion among the, the administration and the task force members, it was decided that we do need an enrollment task force to continue. Uh, but we may want to change where its focus lies a little bit, and we're going to have to discuss that a bit. And so here are some things that we brought up. Okay. First, there's no guarantee that the, that the current positive enrollment picture will remain that way. There are obviously challenges with COVID and then challenges in the future. So those kind of roles may still be important. Not all towns are properly utilizing the Minuteman opportunity. We have a large imbalance between how towns still view Minuteman. The demand for Minuteman demonstrates that we may have built the school too small. What a surprise or not a surprise. So we may want to, and not, not, this is not immediate, but over time have conversations with our communities. And if the trend remains and if the demand remains hot, we may want to consider ways that we can expand, moderately expand the, the options here at Minuteman to allow more students in. Uh, we may want to include the Minuteman Technical Institute among the considerations of the enrollment task force. And I have written here, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, because there are some more ideas that have been percolating. So what we are going to do is we're going to, again, with the administration, look at all these various things and come up with a, a document that will better describe what our plans will be for the future, both kind of short-term and long-term ideas that were, that are percolating around. So more to come to the future as we work in these proposals related to the issues, and that's all I have to say. Unless there are questions?
Uh, Ford?
First of all, we're going to receive an October enrollment report. October 1, I think.
Ed?
Ed and George?
We shared that with the enrollment task force. It's not, you know, certified till the end of the month, but.
Oh, it's the end of the month? Okay.
Yeah. We have the preliminary numbers, yeah.
I'm excited that you're going to continue. I think you have to continue. You got to keep the pedal to the metal, so to speak. Year, every year may be a little bit different. I like that you're talking about expanding into some other areas, which is extremely important. I think, you know, again, with Dan O'Brien around, I think the more information that goes out about the school on a continual basis, and I know some has gone out just this Sunday in the Globe. Ed was quoted. Uh, I think it's very important that we continue that on a very regular basis to our communities, because there are real advantages to going to Minuteman. I'm not surprised that Concord is sending a lot of kids to advanced manufacturing. I think engineering opportunities for students up and down 128, specifically when I think about Lexington, Arlington, Concord. There's a strong engineering component of people who live there. So I think those opportunities must really be expanded. That's all I have to say.
Um, thank you, Ford. Anyone else? Um, Jennifer, did you raise your hand or not? No. Okay. Um, thank you very much, Jeff. Let's move to the hardworking policy subcommittee.
Hi. You'll notice that we used to have three items for tonight, but not all the materials that we promised you were, made it to the packet, so we aren't discussing the facilities usage. The questions that you asked needed The questions that you asked needed to be answered, and we haven't adequately addressed them, so that's off the agenda for tonight, but we do need to vote on two policies, and then I have one note. So the harassment policy that we are required to adopt to comply with the powers that be, page 19 of your packet, is, could we get a motion to approve it for second reading as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
So, any questions or discussions? Want to do the roll call?
Well, I have one quick question. So, I noticed that harassment has to happen on school grounds. How do we deal with, I mean, is online harassment something that we have in a different policy?
Yeah, that would come under the bullying policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Michael?
I was wondering, I was not able to see in the policy a specific list of school personnel, either faculty, staff, administrators that are required to be trained in implementing this policy, is that something that comes as an addendum?
Ed?
Well, all staff are trained and we're given annual updates, that's part of the regulations and guidelines from the Department of Ed, I believe. So we wouldn't put something in policy that's in regulations or guidelines of the law. Everybody has to go through it, and it's documented in their files, so.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, thank you. The next one is the, a sort of associated policy that was reviewed by the attorneys ACAB-R. So we need a motion to approve grievance procedures for complaints to sexual harassment under title. Et cetera, policy ACAB-R for second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
So.
Any discussion? Jeff?
Just going to make the same comment I made last time, I am going to vote yes on this as well, but I'm having some trouble with both of these policies in the sense that they are very complicated. A lot of the language has been dictated to us. And it makes me less comfortable than our normal policies to vote for these, but I guess it is something that we have to do. They're not as well-written as the ones that were more able to dictate ourselves, I just wanted to mention that and have that on the record again, that's all, thank you.
I concur.
Yeah, me too. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, regretfully, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for dealing with this, this was, I'm sure, very painful for you guys to go over.
It's a ridiculous way to spend your time, but we did it. So the next thing I just wanted to bring to your attention is that in your packet you have policy ACA, which is an existing policy from 2018 that the school committee voted on. We need to get rid of that one because the attorneys said we should after we voted to approve these. So I think on your next agenda, you'll see that one coming back to you for deletion. Because now it's in conflict. So that'll come back, we can't vote on it now because it's not on the agenda, so we'll do it next time.
Okay, thank you, Alice.
Yeah.
Anything else from the policy Subcommittee?
No, I just look forward to better times, thank you.
Don't we all? Let's move on to Secretary's Report. And we have a motion to approve the draft minutes of September 22, 2020 as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Michael?
Very slight correction, I was concerned that the rental costs for school facilities were too too high, not too low. And then Dr. B corrected that with saying that they were intended for audience professionals and not for other visiting community groups, so that'll make better sense.
Okay. Okay, Alice, do you have where, what Michael is referring to?
I'd like him, if he'd tell us where it is.
You want the citation too, huh? Okay, I'll find it.
Just the page number would be perfect.
Talk amongst yourselves.
What the students hate almost most is when they're in breakout rooms and they've done everything they're supposed to do, and they're just sitting there staring at each other. So that's what they tell us, they hate that almost more than anything else in remote teaching. Like this. Except I don't mind.
I was going to say, I enjoy looking at all of you, and I'm assuming this is only going to be a moment.
It's on page 065. Page eight of the minutes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph. Too high, not too low, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the minutes? Can we move to a roll call on the minutes with that correction? Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Sorry, Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Okay, um, next, I'd like a motion to enter executive session. I will read the purpose, and if then, we could follow with a motion. The purposes are as follows. One, executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under authority of any general or specific law, specifically Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F and G, to discuss the possible release of executive session minutes from executive sessions held from January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2013. Two, pursuant to purpose 1 of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to consider an open meeting law complaint against public officers, namely the members of the school committee, such complaint having been filed with the district by David Manjares on January 10th, 2020, and pursuant to purpose 3, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, namely an appeal of the Attorney General's open meeting law determination, open meeting law 2020-120, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the Superintendent Director, Dr. Edward Brookquillen.
So moved.
Who's going to remain and not to return to open session?
Not to return for open session, for items 1 and 2 remaining will be school committee, Dr. Brookquillen, attorney Nancy Campany, Dan O'Brien, and Julia, and I'm sorry, Julia, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. And then for item 3 remaining will be the school committee and Dr. Brookquillen.
I think you need a second also, so I'll second.
Are we returning to open session? Not to return to open session. Okay, are we ready for a roll call? Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.